To get the estimate, just a reminder, the any special census, the entire cost is borne by the community. So we do need to know what this will cost and then do cost benefit analysis. But I really expect that it'll be certainly within our best interest to do a special census since we lost about 7% of our official population between 2010 and 2020. So that's in the works.
Thank you for the updates. If I may ask a question on that, you said that that's an application for an estimate?
Yes, you have to get an estimate first. And then on the basis of that, make a decision if you're going to proceed. And if you do decide, then what the city is responsible for is just about everything except actually writing checks to the enumerators. You have to provide office space, you have to hire people, you have to do all the publicity, similar to what we did in 2020 before the official census. You provide secure storage for information and it's, you know, there's a lot involved. So that's why you have to make a careful decision on whether or not it's actually going to be worth your while.
Great. Thank you for the updates. Next is new business. First, we have ordinance number 2023-04-007, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number seven from HR and Finance.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So I'll go over this budget amendment. So this is the seventh budget amendment to this fiscal year budget. So under general operating fund, we are reallocating available funds from a few personal line items using salary and other personal line items using vacancy savings. So under community development department, we are reallocating $10,000 to fund a new cubicle and desk, so which will be a transfer to the VERF fund, since this is considered a capital purchase. So this will be a one-time transfer. And then we are also transferring $3,500 to cover the cost for an employee's intense training program. And then under public works department, we are transferring a total of $150,000 from a few personal line items to fund a GIS managed services contract and on-call electrical services. And then under the police department, so during the last budget amendment, they received a, the police department received a grant from the justice assistance grant. So all of that was budgeted under training line items. So this budget amendment is just to reallocate a portion of that to the overtime training. And then under stormwater utility fund, for stormwater management planning, an updated estimate came in higher than what's budgeted. So this request is to increase funding by $165,000 to properly complete this project. And then for the Boneyard Creek Bank stabilization, so there is a revision that we would like to make to this. Currently, so in this budget amendment, there is a $145,000 increase to this, to complete this project, but there is an updated revision. So it should have been $290,000, of which $145,000 will be offset by a revenue coming from the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District. And then the remaining $115,000, that will be coming out of the fund balance. So we will have, like, we would have an updated ordinance to reflect this update. And then lastly, under stormwater utility fund, we are reallocating $200,000 from the storm sewer cleaning and televising project, and then another $350,000 from the storm sewer reconstruction project. So both which will be postponed until fiscal year 2024. So this is to fund the storm sewer lining project, which has a total estimated cost of $550,000. And then in addition, we are reallocating $100,000 from the storm sewer reconstruction project to fund a storm sewer abandonment feasibility study. And then under local motor fuel tax fund, we are increasing the budget for the annual joint and crack sealing program from $90,000 to $200,000. So this would reprioritize $110,000 from the Florida James Sherry to Curtis project to cover this year's additional cost. And then under motor fuel tax fund, so the Philo Colorado Anderson Resurface Project, this is not happening this year. So due to the delays in the design, so we are just reprioritizing $60,000 from this project to cover the additional funds needed to complete the Springfield Avenue final construction plan documents. And then the Boneyard Creek Structural Improvement Race Street Bridge, so the design cost came in higher than originally estimated. So in addition, a bad assessment will be required. So we are reallocating $25,000 that is available from the Windsor Road Resurfacing Project to cover this. And then under sanitary sewer fund, we are increasing additional funding of $100,000 to cover the increase in estimated costs for the sanitary management planning and GIS improvements. And the next one, we are reallocating $42,000 from the sanitary sewer reconstruction project to the sanitary sewer lining project. And then under community development grants fund, so part of the approved ARPA concept plan project list is to fund a total $150,000 to support a roof repair and replacement program for low-income Urbana homeowners. So this will be budgeted under community development grants fund. And then due to the timing of distribution of the funds, a portion of that, which is $60,000, will be budgeted in this fiscal year 2023 budget. And then the remaining $90,000 will be added in the proposed fiscal year 24 budget. And then lastly, under American Rescue Plan Fund, so this revision would just budget funding in the appropriate budget account lines for the distributions of funds from the approved ARPA Concept Plan Project List. So the allocations are listed individually on the exhibit. So one that is not listed on the exhibit is the allocation of $1,296,000 to fund the sanitary sewer lining pilot program. So this will be reflected in the fiscal year 2024 budget and in the capital improvement plan. And then in addition, we are allocating $60,000 to pay for the services provided by the regional planning commission in facilitating the development of the ARPA Concept Plan. I think that's all of it. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mary Als.
Hi, thank you. This is a lot of, I think this is the biggest budget amendment I think I have ever seen here. A couple of questions. I know that it is almost tradition these days to reallocate personnel funds to other services. Are you aware, I don't see Tim in the audience, of what progress has been made in terms of filling these positions?
Tim, he's here.
I'm here. We've actually been, as far as public work, and I'll just speak for Public Works, but we've been making a ton of headway in Public Works. So I've been here about two and a half years, and we've floated about 54, 55 FTE of our budgeted 71. Probably about three or four months ago, we got a lot of recruitment success. And we're about 62 or 63 as of this month with really only three remaining recruitments, which would be for maintenance worker, landscape maintenance worker, and then engineering. And two of those could potentially staff upwards of three to five people to completely fill out our FTE. The electricians is one that it's, it's been a struggle. We've had that, an open recruitment for the electricians positions for going on two years now. So that one is something that we're looking at, you know, taking a closer look at in this coming fiscal year to see, you know, are we missing something? Are there alternative options to provide services here? So.
A lot of the things that, right now, as I just scanned this, landscape management, traffic signals, street maintenance, and engineer, we've made banking progress in terms of filling those positions?
Landscape maintenance has just posted externally as of today, along with maintenance workers. Engineering is essentially the next recruitment up, and it's the only one that's remaining that's open at this point for us, where we could staff up to three engineers.
I know that there's been conversation about the traffic signals. Are we not filling that position?
No.
Or have we fallen into something else?
We, we still have two vacant electrician positions. The traffic signal position is essentially an electrician position.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And then the, the stormwater utility plan, there's a cost share, right, with the sanitary UCU, USC?
UCSD, yep.
Thank you, those people. What proportion are they paying for it? And what proportion, are we paying 310,000 and they're paying 145?
We're paying, the total project budget on that will be 545,000 total. We started with a budget, I think, of 275,000. We, we bid the project, actually, and this is one that came in exceptionally high. So we rejected all bids, and we went and talked to the bidders to talk about what are things that made this so exponentially high. And some of the big things were stream diversion and access challenges into the, into the Boneyard Creek. So we went, we got with our consultant and went back to the drawing board to try to simplify it. And in that time, UCSD approached us and said, we would, we would like some bank stabilization around our pump station enforcement that crosses just upstream of where you guys are performing work. So we worked with them to expand the project further down, which it expanded part of the city's project, which was things in our vested interest to do, and then things for them as well, which we went from 275 to about 400,000 total for ours, which it might be easier if I pull up a document on the computer to show you a little bit of reference of this project. But they're paying about 25% of the total project. But I can come up, I've got a thing I can share on the screen.
Sure, thank you.
This is a little visual, just to kind of show you where we started and where we got to. Originally, we knew there were bigger problems along this whole stretch of Boneyard Creek with, as far as bank stabilization. Our initial shot was to get this yellow section done at the top of that, because it's, it's very close to an existing building that we wanted to try to get done quickly. Well, then when the buds, or the bids came in exorbitant, we stepped back, went back to the drawing board. When UCSD wanted to expand this section in red, this, this section in orange was kind of our next priority section. And it made sense from economy of scale to just do both of those together if we're going to do them. So that's, that's essentially the concept that we're working with here. And unfortunately, Creek's stabilization is not easy. So it just costs a lot of money to get in there and do this while the stream stays flowing.
And this is a self-supporting fund, is that right?
Correct.
So are we damaging the self-supporting fund into a negative area, or?
Not currently. Part of this comes back from like the swamp that we've talked about, some of the stormwater asset management plan, where we went a number of years without getting inspection and things like that in our infrastructure. So we are still working on trying to play catch-up for doing more inspection, doing more review to identify problems and projects out there. So we have a, we have an elevated fund balance right now that'll get drawn relatively quickly as we continue to identify more and more projects.
Okay, so this doesn't put us in deficit in that fund, nor does it impact the general funding?
Nope.
And then, so the, the motor fuel tax reassignment from the Philo Colorado Anderson resurface, is that, what, if we're taking that money out of that and putting it into the, the planning services for Springfield and Boneyard, what does that do to the Philo Colorado project? Does that delay it?
No, no. The Philo Colorado Anderson project, some of the design has taken a little bit longer. Some of that's due to kind of alternative planning. As we got in and we found out certain conditions of those roadways were in worse shape than we thought, we had to reassess our game plan. In some cases, it was elevating them from rehabilitation status to reconstruction status, if we wanted to address them. Anderson specifically, it was one that there were not, based on the condition, once we did core assessments and things like that of the pavement, there were not great rehabilitation options for it. So what we decided to do at the time was, Philo and Colorado are basically being prioritized right now with that in the design. We have an Anderson kind of rough design out. And because it's going from rehab to reconstruction, we, it's harder to prioritize that one, because the dollars go up exponentially when we do that.
I was just gonna say, the dollars originally were 101.7 million. It's going to be a heck of a lot higher for reconstructing the road.
Right. And I think, I think the, the target we're moving with now is that Philo and Colorado are the priorities, and there are rehabilitation options for those. So we would prioritize getting those out to bid. And then Anderson, we would, we have some work already done on it, but we may forego bidding that, because it's going to be elevated to reconstruction.
So I guess my confusion is, is we know that it's going to cost more for us to do the, at least Philo and Colorado, and potentially Anderson. Is it because this is not being done this fiscal year that we've decided to move money, because it's going to have a bigger chunk in the next budget year?
Partially. Partially, it's a timing thing. Partially, with Anderson, we've kind of stopped doing full reconstruction design on it now, because we've prioritized getting the rehabilitation stuff done. And then we'll revisit Anderson next fiscal year or after that. Going to reconstruction, it may drop out of priority, just because it's immense cost.
So what do we do if it drops out of priority? I mean, if it's a street that really desperately needs to be redone, how is that handled if it's not prioritized anymore?
We got lots of those, unfortunately. Unfortunately, we just, the bank is not deep enough for us to do everything. We have streets that are probably in worse condition than Anderson. Part of why Anderson got prioritized with that project is because it was contiguous with Philo and Colorado. And that's one of our metrics we look at for when we're prioritizing projects, is there an opportunity to gain an economy of scale by doing contiguous projects as one. Now, when Anderson jumped out of rehabilitation into reconstruction, it changed that narrative, where if we're looking at Anderson as a standalone reconstruction project, I doubt that it's going to gain the same priority that it gained when it was going to be a contiguous rehabilitation project.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, Chandra?
So Tim, we had previously spoken about the televising projects. Since we're postponing it to 2024, would that, and you're doing the, the study, would that offer any cost savings, because you're doing the study and finding which ones actually need the attention?
Yeah, so, so essentially, what has happened is, when we staffed up in engineering a little bit in the last six, six to nine months, one of our staff members has been dedicated to reviewing, I think when we talked in the swamp, you know, we've got less than 50% of our system televised at this point, within the last 10 years. Our engineering tech was staffed with reviewing that film. And what has come out of that is the result where we have a lot more lining to do that hasn't happened for five to seven years at this point. Being as we have identified rehabilitation things, we prioritize that over furthering our inspection. So we're going to get through that and then jump back into inspection next year to start getting it on a cycle where we're reviewing, we're analyzing, we're capital planning, and then we're doing it in another section another year.
And then, I have a question about the community development grants. If the, the funds are being split across the, the two fiscal years, do we have an idea, like, when people could apply, or would it just all be next year? Maybe Sheila can answer that.
I believe they are accepting applications now. Sheila Dodge is here, so she can give you more detail on that.
We currently have four applications that look like they're going to move forward. And so that's why we guesstimated the total cost to be 60,000 for this year. But given timing, we're not going to have time to spend all of it. So we'll do the balance next year.
And how are you, how did those four applicants come by the funds? I guess, I haven't seen any advertising.
Sure. We reached out to people who had applied to us in the past, and they didn't qualify, either their project was too much, or a variety of reasons. So we reached out to them first to say, hey, this program's going, if you're still needing assistance. And that's how we got the first round. And the next round will continue to advertise through our normal processes.
I'm sorry, one more question. Is there, like, a maximum amount that applicants can request, or is it just like?
For the roofs, it's 15,000.
Okay.
That's kind of where they were coming in at. Our old program guidelines was 8,000. But when you look at the rising cost of construction materials, and, you know, if there's sheathing or, you know, damage underneath, you don't know that when you start. So we're just kind of budgeting the maximum.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there other questions? Yes, go ahead, Mary Als.
I can ask her some questions. So the first thing that struck me on the, the rebudgeting of the community development funds was traditionally, we have money set aside for professional development within each of the different departments within the city. So is the amount to train this new person above and beyond what we typically have in our professional development fund?
I think that there are funds that we set aside last year under a purchase order for, to be used this year, hoping we would have the position filled sooner. It wasn't filled sooner, that training has gone in pass. So we just kept the purchase order in place. So it makes it look like the training budget is higher than what it really is because of that purchase order.
Okay. And then having a, a new cubicle that's going to go into VERF to spend, so are we increasing the number of staff? I'm always under the impression we're trying to find more staff.
We're trying to find a place to put the staff we have, yep. With vacancies, we've been okay. But I'm hoping with the changes in HR, we'll soon be fully staffed, and we don't have a place for everybody to sit right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Have others? I had a few here. This is maybe an alley question on, looking at the last page where it's got all the breakdown, I'm looking at the ARPA fund, and it looks like that, you know, that third column of numbers is the actual amount, right? I'm just confused if it's supposed to be the same labeling as current budget revised and then difference.
Yes, so that third column would be what is funded for each of those applicants for the ARPA.
Do the budgeted and revised column numbers mean anything in particular?
So that is for that specific line item. So the revised would be adding that, those, each of those amounts. So it just adds up.
Okay, okay.
So it's like for second line there, the 814,000, that is just like after you add up the, the first line. For the Urbana, SD 116. So that is allocated to that line. So the revised budget would just be adding up those, all of those.
Okay. I don't know if that's adding up. But anyway, the, the last column is the actual amount, right?
That is the actual.
Something internal we don't maybe need to worry about as much. I was also wondering if, makes sense not to know off the top of your head, and I was trying to find the last budget amendment, but I don't know if maybe for next week, if you could get back to us on what's the change to the general operating fund balance from this amendment. I was trying to find like what it was after the previous budget amendment. So I don't know if we could have that information, unless you have it off the top of your head or papers.
So it would be, so if you look at the current budget, that, the beginning fund balance, so for the general operating fund, that 11.7 million, that would be the, what's the fund balance from the last budget amendment.
That 12.9 million? At the very bottom?
For the general operating fund?
General fund.
That would be the 11.7 million. So that's what the, the ending fund balance from the last budget amendment. So that would be the beginning for this budget amendment.
Thank you. And then on the Boneyard Creek Bank Stabilization, you mentioned that you'll have an update with some corrected numbers. Did you mean for next week?
For Monday, yeah, before Monday's meeting. So we'll have an updated, so we'll probably work on that tomorrow and then send it to city clerk for the revised exhibit and then the ordinance.
And could you remind us where the money's being transferred for that bank stabilization project?
I'm sorry, for which one?
The Boneyard Creek Bank Stabilization, where, where our contribution is coming from?
I, I can take that one. It's the Stormwater General Fund, essentially. We have, if you look in the, well, you don't have the CIP in front of you, but we, we have a positive fund balance currently of about a million dollars that, as we continue to identify projects, we're going to chew through that. But for the time being, we have excess there. And like I said, with the televising, we're kind of lagging behind on identifying projects. So we're just, this is the next, this is the number one priority that we have in front of us now without others identified. So it'll just come out of the fund balance.
Thank you. I had one last one about the Justice Assistance Grant. And okay, if it's out of the purview of people here. But is, are we saying that there's, we have to have overtime for police officers to do this training? Like, there's not a way to do this training not on overtime?
Yes, they have to do, they, they can't do this while on the clock. So they have to do, they would have to do the training overtime, as overtime.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or interest in a motion?
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2023-04-007, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number seven, on to City Council for approval on the regular agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Chandra for approval on the regular agenda, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2023-04-008, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14-7, regarding the schedule of fees, also from HR Finance.
So, so first, I want to take a minute to say thank you to Shannon Clark, who spent many, many hours on this update, and also to Lakita Hodges, who worked on this with her. So it was a big effort, and it's something that we haven't done for several years because of the pandemic. So I will start this off, and then Shannon's going to jump in with some details. So tonight, what, what we're asking you to do is to forward this to a city council meeting on May 8. And the reason for that is that the city code requires that the fee schedule be put on file and available for public inspection for at least 30 days before any action. A notice will be published in the News Gazette saying that it's available for inspection. And so your action tonight would begin, begin the clock on that 30-day period for us, so that we can move this forward. So we haven't talked a lot about fees in the last few years, but generally, fees are used to attach a price to a public service, and then to allocate the cost of that service to the people who use the service. So each of these fees helps to cover the cost of providing a specific service to the public. Staff reviews the fees generally on an annual basis to keep pace with the cost of providing services. However, in light of financial concerns for Urbana residents around the pandemic, the last fee increases were effective July 1, 2019, for license permit and service fees, and in August 2020 for liquor fees. So since that time, there have been no increases. The increases that we're proposing at this time are not meant to go back and make up for that period in the interim where we didn't do fee increases. What were, what we recommended generally was 4% increases, but we also asked department staff who manage those activities to take a look and see if they thought that was reasonable, or if there's some kind of extenuating circumstance. So the 4% increase is primarily driven by rising personnel costs, which includes cost of living adjustments, step and longevity increases, and related benefits. By way of comparison, if you go back to July 2019, when we did the last fee increases, in that period from July 2019 to February 2023, which is the most recent data that we have available, the Consumer Price Index has increased by 17.25%. So, you know, our costs don't trend exactly with the CPI, but I think, I think it's fair to say that the cost increases that we've experienced over that period far outweigh the 4%. And again, we're not asking to go back and recapture that. And again, we're not asking to go back and recapture that. The proposed four percent increase was also reflected in the five-year financial forecast that we talked about a couple of months ago, and I believe it was, I know it was in the report, and I believe we also mentioned that in the presentation, that they were, that we were planning around that increase. So these annual fee revisions help the city to maintain a balanced budget while providing a consistent level of service to our residents. So I'm going to pass this over to Shannon, and she's going to add some more details.
Okay, sorry. The first category is liquor licenses. These are general operating fund revenues. After review by the Mayor's Office, staff did not propose any increase to the majority of liquor license fees to remain comparable to the City of Champaign for the benefit of those who choose to do business in Urbana. So there were some proposed changes to a few fees. These include increases to new license application and temporary liquor license fees that are proposed to increase due to time spent based on these, on these activities. In addition, there is a proposed decrease to complimentary liquor license fees to incentivize business owners to offer this service to their customers. The next category is general business licenses, and staff proposes a four percent fee increase for general business licenses. Processing of these licenses requires staff time to review applications and related materials, and examples of these include hotel motel and sanitary holler licenses. The next category are community development-related permits, licenses, and inspection fees. These are general fund revenues as well. These relate to building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, plan review, and rental registration fees. And after review, community development proposed increases, which in some cases vary, related to the time spent in performing the services. So for example, proposed fee increases for new single and two-family construction permits vary based on square footage of the home. These fees were also reviewed to be more competitive with neighboring jurisdictions. Some fees did remain unchanged in this category due to the same criteria. So examples of these are demolition, demolition and moving fees. There was all the, also the addition of a solar plan review fee and a new fee for no-show and after-hour inspections to account for the amount of staff time required to show up for those. The minimum fee for working without a permit and failure to register rental registration fees increased. In addition, the CD zoning and development proposed fee increases four percent. The next category of public works fees, which are also general fund revenues, are proposed to increase by four percent. These include right-of-way erosion control permits and non-franchise utility maintenance fees. And there is also a new fee proposed for the planting of street trees to be furnished and installed by the city in accordance with the Land Development Code. The next category are sewer use charge and stormwater utility fees, each of which are in their own separate fund. The proposed increase here is four percent and would be effective January 1st, 2024. The January 1st effective date matches the rate change timing for the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district as these fees are billed through them. A more comprehensive study of stormwater fees is currently underway, SWOMP, as Tim mentioned earlier. So it is anticipated that this study will result in a higher increase in stormwater utility fees in the future due to the, due to the estimated cost of operating, maintaining, and replacing our stormwater infrastructure. Recycling fees are in a separate recycling fund, and there was no increase proposed to these fees due to a healthy fund balance. Another separate fund, parking fund, so parking fees, there is not a proposed fee increase for downtown parking meters, and these fees would remain unchanged at fifty cents per hour. There is a proposed one dollar per day increase in downtown meter bagging and a four percent increase in downtown lot rental and special parking permit area fees. On campus, there is a proposed twenty-five percent increase, increasing meter rates from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five per hour. These fees are generally increased in quarter increments, and they have not been increased since 2011. This increase is consistent with the U of I's current meter rates, and the related campus meter bagging and street rental parking fees are proposed to increase by the same percentage because those relate to the same rates. This calendar year, there is a planned meter upgrade based on the need to replace the meter mechanisms and related software, and the increase in fees is necessary to maintain a positive parking fund balance. There is no recommendation to increase parking fines or ticket fees, which are part of a separate schedule, the Urbana Local Traffic Code. Last category are fire department fees. These are general fund fees, and there is a proposed four percent increase for fire prevention permits and non-resident reimbursement of fire rescue services. And there is a new proposed fee for fire watch services that is set at the same rate as fire rescue services. So as previously discussed and provided in detail in the memo, several fees were unchanged, sometimes because these fees are set by other jurisdictions, new fees were proposed, and some fees were removed. In your packet, you'll see that all changes to the schedule of fees were provided by a marked-up version of the current fee schedule. And the fiscal impact, which is also provided, is forty-one thousand dollars for the general operating fund, fifty-nine thousand dollars for the sanitary sewer fund, seventy-five thousand dollars for the stormwater utility fund, and two-hundred forty-one thousand for the parking fund, for a total of four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars on an annualized basis. So as Elizabeth previously mentioned, no action is required tonight except to forward this item to the City Council meeting on May 8th with or without changes. And we'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you. Hard choices. I'll go, Chandra.
I was just curious as to why the parking fee in the downtown didn't increase if you, was it not, I guess, equal to other jurisdictions, or what was the reasoning behind that?
Basically, to incentivize business in the downtown area, and I don't believe U of I has a similar comparison to, to compare that to.
Questions? Mary Alice, did you have some?
Champagne certainly has a downtown parking fee. It's very expensive.
They do.
Lots of people try and park illegally in other parking lots.
You're right, they do.
So I had a couple of questions. The first one was, I wasn't realized that, that we had a campus parking lot, which...
So it's really a, we do have a campus parking lot that's metered by Jimmy John's. So those would just be the meter rates.
Oh, those are Urbana.
And then we have a couple of spaces, I can't remember, they're near Timponi's, that have their rental spaces.
Oh, yeah, there's some signs over there.
Yes.
Okay, I just wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, it's not very, just a few spaces, I think four.
Um, and then my second question was, looking at the rental registration, there's a proposed increase for mobile homes, single family, and duplexes, but not for multifamily. What is the rationale behind that?
So community development looked at the fees in line with neighboring jurisdictions, and just based on the rates that they were set at, and felt that the multifamily fees were already set at an appropriate rate. I don't know.
Because I don't think Champagne has a rental registration program.
I don't believe so, no.
No. So who were the neighboring communities? Bloomington Normal, do they have one?
Yeah, I don't know if CD's here to answer some of these questions, or we can take them down and respond.
I would be interested to know, because it doesn't seem fair to hit the low, small landlords and not hit the bigger landlords. I also have a bit of a question about adding this new solar plan review fee. And we want to incentivize people to put up their, put up solar panels on homes. So I just did a quick calculation, and if you have a fifteen thousand solar array that's put on, that's a seventy-five dollar fee to the city to review. Now, I understand it costs the staff time to look at them, but I, I think it goes a little bit counter to what we're trying to accomplish, encouraging more green infrastructure. And since we don't already collect it, I'd like to hear a little bit more rationale about that. And third is, there's two, there's three new fees for fire watch services. Do you have any insight into what that means?
Yes, I, I had to ask that question myself. So it's for businesses, for example, let's say their sprinkler system is down for some reason temporarily. They work with the fire department. They'll have a person on staff that will log and go through the building and just do some checks that the fire department here will help them with. But this is really the fee to come and check the logs, not really for this, our staff to sit in the building and walk the building. It's to the time that they spend to make sure that they're, making sure that there's no problem with their, with the fire watch services while that business is, is looking at the log and reviewing to make sure there's no problems.
Okay, it just seems it would be more of a flat fee, so to speak, for different-sized buildings, rather than having it very itemized in terms of per apparatus. I assume that's per sprinkler system, if, based on what you're saying. I don't know what per apparatus means.
That's if they have to bring a truck for some reason, like they have to bring a prior truck with them.
It's the number of trucks they're bringing, it's not, okay.
Yes.
Per firefighter, and then a minimum fee of one hour apparatus and staff.
I think it's written that way because, because they travel in groups, right?
Sure.
Whenever they go somewhere, the whole company goes with the truck.
Sure.
Because if they get a fire call, they all have to respond together.
Right, right. So you have three or four people per truck. It can kind of add up there. Anyway, just something to think about. That doesn't have to be particularly changed. And your explanation was great. I know this is a, is a hard process to go through and so forth. There were some confusing ones in here, but I'm going to think that the staff did their due diligence in looking at what's going on across the, the different communities around here. But those are my three main questions. Thank you.
Yes, Chris?
Yeah, um, thank you very much for the greater detail. It really helps. I, I guess my question would be to you, Elizabeth. So how long will this increase last? Like, when will we have to increase this again, or do you even know?
Well, as I, as I mentioned at the, at the start, this previously was an annual process. We would do this every year prior to the beginning of a new budget year because our costs go up, just like all costs tend to go up over time. So I would expect we would be back here about this time next year.
So every time we raise the salary of our personnel, requires that we raise the fee amount? Is that what's happening here, or how would you characterize it?
Correct. Generally, so periodically, we'll try and do a detailed analysis for, for one of these fees, but generally, in the, in between years, what we want to do is make, make sure that our, that we're recapturing our costs to provide that service. And the biggest part of our costs is personnel costs, as you know. That's a huge percentage of our, our operating budget.
Yeah, thank you.
Chandra?
Um, looking at the liquor licenses, what, could you explain what the CS complimentary service class is?
Yeah, I had to ask that myself, and I relate it to, like, you go to a business and they offer mimosas.
Oh.
So there's like a limit to how many you can offer.
Okay.
But it's that type of service. I think of it like going to the spa.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, that's fine. And so you said there were, there have been no applications. How are you, I guess, how do they know that this complimentary service is there, or do they have to ask for it? Or, I guess if you open up a nail salon or a spa, like, oh, that's something you would consider, but like, any other places?
We sometimes have clothing stores, some other retail operations, but it's, it's a liquor license just like any other license, so they have to apply for it. But it's a one-time.
And then the original application for a new license fee is increased to five hundred dollars from two twenty-five due to the amount of staff time required. Is the increase in, is there, why is there an increase in staff time, or what more duties have been?
Um, it's really not that staff time increase for the new applications, it's just it takes longer than previously anticipated. So that two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars when it was set doesn't seem to cover the amount of staff time that it takes.
I can add to that. Actually, there is a tremendous, sometimes tremendously more staff time required, especially for first-time liquor license applicants. They need, they have a lot more questions, takes a lot more phone calls. Sometimes we have to walk through the applications with them. It could take multiple meetings with them as they try to figure out their business model and that sort of thing. And then we have to make sure that both these, all the paperwork is filled out at the state level plus at the local level. So there's a lot more steps and more time involved many times in working with a first-time applicant. And that's, it's, it's pretty intense sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
No questions? Um, I had a few from A. So with some of these, I'm also would echo Mary Alice's question about some more information about the idea of adding the solar plan review, and maybe a little bit about street trees as well. And so with things, just getting some general education here, like roof repair, roof replacement, so you're saying like any even residential, if they have a roof replacement, they're supposed to have the city come inspect it and do these fees and all?
Yes, I believe that's correctish.
And maybe, I think you already mentioned it, but could you remind us where this would be advertised for public input?
Yes, it's on the city's website, but we're going to send a public notice to the News Gazette with a link to where these fees are held.
Thank you. And then looking at the actual ordinance, I'm reading this as the ordinance being written that we are approving these amendments right now, tonight. I don't see anything about moving it to a May 8th meeting on the ordinance itself.
Right, well, that wouldn't normally be in the ordinance. What you're going to do is move the ordinance to the May 8th regular meeting, because you're in committee now, you're not approving anything.
So you would like for someone to make a motion to move this onto the agenda for May 8th meeting?
Correct.
For approval? Okay, thank you. Yes, Mary Alice?
I just have one final question. So if something changes, did you say it was a thirty-day notification?
Yes, thirty days.
So if something changes in this between now and then, and if we have it on the agenda for May 8th, do we have to put it out for another thirty days?
No, we have not done that in the past. As long as it's out and available for review for thirty days.
Okay.
We could, we could make a change on the eighth, or ideally before we could have it ready.
Okay. I'm happy to make a motion.
Oops, saying no other questions? Sure, thank you.
All right, I will move ordinance number 2023 zero four zero zero eight, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14 seven, regarding the schedule of fees to May 8th meeting with no recommendation.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have Mary Alice moving that with no recommendation to the agenda for May 8th, and seconded by Chandra. Do we have discussion? I have some. If, Mary Alice would be willing to take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair. Chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you for the staff time going into, looking into these fee increases. I just wanted to say to the public too, that it's something that, you know, I don't enjoy. I don't think any of us want to see fee increases, but I think that this does absolutely make sense where unfortunately, everything is increasing even more, and if we don't keep up, we're not going to be able to, as you said, maintain that same level of service and keep up with all the increases and costs. So I think it's really unfortunate that everything's going up, but I absolutely understand that we've got to at least keep a little bit of pace with that. So I think that in general, four percent increase is reasonable to me, and I encourage anyone of the public listening, and especially our small business owners, liquor license holders, to review this and give us their input in that time period, because I'm definitely interested in hearing from the people who are impacted by a lot of these fee structures, and also look forward to some more information at that time. Thank you. I'll take the chair back.
All right, I relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Chandra?
I would also suggest posting this to the, the city's social media, because not everyone reads the Gazette, nor will they just drop by the clerk's office. So I, I'd like us to utilize, when we have opportunities for public input for things, to be using our social media as well, because that seems to have a lot of reach.
Any others? Okay. Then we have the motion for moving this to May 8th. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes. And that item passes, and we'll talk about it again May 8th. Thank you for the presentation. And next, we have ordinance number 2023-04-009, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, R3/B1 to B2, at 714 East University Avenue, Plan Case Number 2470M-23 from Community Development. Thank you.
Good evening, Committee of the Whole. I did distribute the letter of support mentioned in the staff report to council members prior to the meeting, so that should be on your dais there. Sharon Schaefer requests to rezone 714 East University Avenue from its current split zoning of R3, single and two-family residential, and B1 neighborhood business. The current use of Schaefer Sanitary Waste-Hauling Service, which has been there for 60 years, is legally non-conforming within the current zoning designations. At its May 9th, 2023 meeting, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on this case. Staff recommended rezoning the property to B2 neighborhood business. The Plan Commission voted unanimously with five ayes and zero nays to recommend that City Council approve rezoning this property to B2. Staff concur and request that this case be placed on the City Council Consent Agenda. The site is located at the northwest corner of East University Avenue and Ash Street. The west half of the property is zoned B1. You can see that here in the orange. Sorry. The west half is zoned R3, that's the orange, and the east half is zoned B1 neighborhood business. That's the very light coral pink on the east half of the parcel. Let me actually make it a little easier for you to see. And it has been the location of Schaefer Sanitary, as I said, since the 1950s. The adjacent properties on the north side of University Avenue, to the east and west and north are zoned R3, single and two-family residential, and the property across University Avenue to the south is zoned IN1, light industrial. The table in the staff report goes through the current land uses and current zonings and future land uses of all of the parcels. Going to show you some photos. This is looking at Schaefer Sanitary from the corner of Ash and University Avenue, looking northwest. This is the garage that the operations run out of, vehicles are parked in the parking lot and to the west. The top three photographs are showing the CU MTD complex to the south, and the photo at the bottom is looking north up Ash Street towards the UCSD complex. And you can see the houses and garages on either side of Ash Street of the residences. The applicant plans to move their waste hauling business and wants to have a family member relocate their existing auto detailing business to the site. Auto detailing is not listed in the table of uses in the zoning ordinance. The zoning administrator has determined that this use would be most similar to a personal service such as dry cleaning or pet care or grooming, and that that would be permitted in the proposed B2 zoning district. The property was originally two house lots. In 1961, Russ Schaefer requested a rezoning of the land to industrial from its then residential zoning, but was denied. The east half of the lot was later rezoned to B1, but nothing was done with the west half. This status of the legally non-conformity prohibits expansion of the buildings or a change to any other use not permitted in the B1 for the east half or R3 for the west half. Rezoning the entire lot to the recommended B2 zoning district would allow an auto detailing use on the entire property as well as many other commercial uses. The 2005 Comprehensive Plan designates this area for future residential use. Here is the exhibit. You can see everything north of University Avenue is residential in the neighborhood, but then changes to the blue institutional. You've got UCSD to the northeast here, and you've got the National Guard Armory to the northwest. The Comprehensive Plan also designates future land use of heavy industrial to the south where CU MTD is, as well as Amulse Coat, and then further south is the central business areas and more residential future land uses. The Plan, 2005 Comprehensive Plan, does include in that definition of residential, including quote "compatible uses" such as duplexes, townhomes, civic uses, institutional uses, and parks where zoning is appropriate. While the primary use promoted in this designation is residences, the accompanying figure which is shown in the staff report shows a commercial use along the periphery of the residential area, indicating that neighborhood businesses are compatible with the residential designation, and that the inclusion of a neighborhood business in a residential area is not necessarily out of sync with the Comprehensive Plan. Since the site is in a residential neighborhood and along a major arterial, it would be appropriate to rezone the entire lot to our, sorry, B2 neighborhood business arterial. This zoning would allow auto detailing and other lower-intensity businesses, while higher-intensity uses that may not be suitable for the neighborhood would either be prohibited or would be allowed with additional zoning permitting required. Staff analyzed the proposed rezoning using the criteria listed in the LaSalle and Sinclair cases. First, regarding the existing land uses and rezoning of the nearby property. Many of the uses in the recommended B2 zoning district would be compatible with the existing land uses and zoning of the nearby property. Although the property is bounded on three sides by a single and two-family residential, the CU Mass Transit District Complex and Amulse Coat are across University Avenue, and the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District Complex and the Illinois National Guard Complex are both less than 500 feet away. This should weigh in favor of the recommended zoning to B2. Second, regarding the extent to which property values are diminished by the restrictions of the ordinance, both the R3 and B1 zoning designations greatly restrict the number of permitted uses on the property, and the fact that each zoning designation applies to only half of the property compounds that restriction. While the R3 district allows a single or two-family house on the west half of the lot, the B1 district requires a conditional use permit for the same use on the east half of the lot. Conversely, the B1 district allows a garden shop or a bakery, while the R3 district prohibits almost all business uses. The current split zoning prohibits any expansion or rebuilding of the current legally non-conforming waste hauler service building. Rezoning the property to a district that would allow other business uses would likely not result in substantial reductions in neighboring property values. This should weigh neutrally or in favor of the recommended zoning to B2. Third, regarding the extent to which the ordinance promotes the health, safety morals, or general welfare of the public, the recommended B2 zoning district would allow the property owners to convert the waste hauler use to something that may bring more beneficial goods or services to the neighborhood and community in general. This should weigh neutrally or in favor of the recommended rezoning. Fourth, regarding the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the property owner, the public would likely benefit from many of the uses allowed by the recommended rezoning. On the other hand, the property owner would suffer a significant hardship if they were not able to replace or make substantial repairs to the legally non-conforming business they have operated for over 60 years. They would also face a significant hardship when selling the property, as the current R1-B3 split zoning does not make the property attractive to future owners. This should weigh in favor of the recommended rezoning to B2. Fifth, regarding the suitability of the subject property for the zoned purposes, the property would be suitable for many of the uses in the recommended B2 zoning district. Some uses would require a conditional or special use permit, which would allow oversight of the operations by the Urbana Zoning Board of Appeals or Plan Commission, and then ultimately City Council for special use permits. The property has hosted a waste hauler service for over 60 years, which is a special use in the higher-intensity B3 zoning district, and would likely be able to host less intensive B2 uses without negatively affecting the neighborhood. This should weigh neutrally or in favor of the recommended rezoning to B2. Sixth, regarding the length of time the property has been vacant. Well, the property has not been vacant yet. If the recommended rezoning is not granted, the existing waste hauler service could operate indefinitely until the building needs more than minor repairs. After that time, the use would have to change to one permitted by the current R3 and B1 zoning districts, or the property would become vacant. Granting the recommended rezoning would increase the number of uses allowed on the property and could reduce the potential vacancy in the future. This should weigh neutrally or in favor of the recommended zoning to B2. Seventh, regarding the community's need for more of the proposed use. The applicant requests a rezoning to allow for an auto detailing service. Again, a rezoning request isn't about a specific use, it's about a suite of uses for that district, so keeping that in mind. There are similar uses in the region, but not within the immediate vicinity, indicating a potential market. East University Avenue is a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses, so it might be a good location for the proposed use. It is unclear if there is a need for more of the types of uses that would be allowed if the rezoning was granted. However, the recommended rezoning to B2 would allow for more commercial uses in general. This should weigh in favor of the recommended rezoning to B2. And finally, the care with which the community has planned its land use development. In the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, the properties are identified as part of the residential future land use designation that encompasses the entire neighborhood. Although the property has been the site of a waste hauler service for over 60 years, predating the Comprehensive Plan by decades, and clearly is not a residential use, the recommended rezoning to B2 neighborhood business arterial does not align with the primary use of the residential designation. However, the plan does show a peripheral commercial use in its example of the residential future land use. This should weigh neutrally relative to the recommended rezoning to B2. Overall, in staff's opinion, the request meets the criteria for the recommended zoning map amendment to B2. Three criteria weighing in favor of the request, four criteria weighing in favor or neutral to the request, and one criterion weighing neutrally or against the recommended rezoning. Staff published a legal ad in the News Gazette to notify the public of the request, and also sent letters to neighboring property owners notifying them of the request, and posted a public hearing sign on the property. We received one email from a resident one block from the property that expressed support. That's the letter I gave you today. And one neighbor spoke at the Plan Commission meeting. Plan Commission discussed the original request to rezone to B3, and then also discussed the staff recommended rezoning to B2 at its March 9th meeting. The applicant stated that she would accept the Plan Commission's recommended alternative rezoning to B2 neighborhood business arterial. And then staff, sorry, then Commission voted unanimously with five ayes and zero nays to recommend that City Council approve the recommended rezoning to B2 neighborhood business arterial. The findings are summarized in the staff report. City Council has the following options in Plan Case 2470M23: to approve the zoning map amendment to B2 neighborhood business arterial, based on the findings in this memo, and place the request on the City Council Consent Agenda, or deny the zoning map amendment, and if so, articulate findings supporting the denial. Ms. Schaefer is here to answer questions, if you like. Staff concur with the recommendation to forward the case to City Council with the recommendation to approve, and request the case be placed on the Council Consent Agenda. That's the end of the staff report, and I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions? This is Mary Alice.
Hey, Marcus, thank you.
Welcome.
I'm curious, the applicants requested B1 at first, and staff recommended B2?
They recommend, they requested B3.
Oh, B3, I'm sorry.
General business. And so this is less intense.
Okay, so this is less intense, because I was trying to figure out, B1 is even less intense than B2. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
And then, I mean, I was scrolling through here, trying to figure out the permitted uses between B1 and B2. And you said that you were treating this as a dry cleaning or laundry establishment.
Treating it as a personal service, examples of which would be dry cleaning or pet care grooming, based on the number of visits that would come, the length of time that somebody would stay, the number of customers the auto detailer would work on, on a particular day.
So that, that was kind of my, what I was thinking about, was, you know, how many cars are going to be at a proposed business, and for how long? And I assume that auto detailing is not gonna be like driving through the, the car wash, right?
That's
You're gonna leave your car, leave, and they'll detail it, and you come back and you get your car once it's detailed. So
Right.
I guess my concern was the number of vehicles that would be there, waiting to be detailed. What is the appropriate type of business that would have something similar versus a dry cleaning place where you go in, you drop your stuff, and you leave, right? So it's very quick turnaround time.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Um, well, so for the dry cleaning, you drop your cleaning off and you come back the next day, or two days later.
Right, but you're not leaving your car.
Right, yes. So it is gonna be limited by the size of the lot. If you're familiar with some of the other auto detailing businesses, there's one on East Main Street that also hosts a U-Haul. They probably work on two or three, four cars a day, and I believe there's maybe two or three staff. It, it's, that particular one, when I drive by, I don't see multiple cars out. They're, you know...
Are there any conditions, like you can't have more than 10 vehicles parked at the same time, or is there any, because this is a by right, right? So two things. We're changing the zoning, but when we change the zoning, all these items are considered by rights, so there are no conditions unless it's a special or conditional use.
So I guess what I would point back to is the history of the site. It has been the site of a waste hauler station that hosts
Sure.
multiple garbage hauling trucks and towing, you know, the, the portable dumpsters outside. So that compared to people dropping off their cars to be detailed, is it a more intense use, or is it a less intense use?
I mean, to be clear, I don't have an issue with changing the zoning to be appropriate.
Okay, right.
I'm just questioning if, if, you know, how that would impact the neighborhood in terms of, you know, let's say that the, the owners currently decide to just sell it, once they get the zoning changed.
Right.
Perfectly within their right to do so, then the by right stuff is what could potentially be there.
Right, yes.
Right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And so there, you know, for most of our uses, we don't specify what I would call specific conditions for operating it. You know, number of vehicles that are allowed only unless You know, number of vehicles that are allowed, only unless there's a conditional or a special use permit there.
Well, I think all of the permitted uses in the B12 zoning district look fine to me. I'm just questioning allocation of a car service as falling into that by right. That's my big question.
And staff were, you know, thinking about, you know, the past fifty or sixty years, and it felt like if the neighborhood could host a waste hauler service that was a good neighbor, and we did not have evidence of complaints in the property maintenance file. And again, that's, that is this particular family that ran it. If it was a different firm or family, it could have been a completely different situation.
But once we change it, it goes to anybody.
Right, and, and we then, if there were concerns about garbage, that's handled under the city's nuisance code. If there's concerns about noise, if there's concerns about, you know, environmental issues with waste fluids or other things, that's handled, you know, with the IEP A. So, you know, this isn't the end of it, this is simply shifting the suite of uses that are available at that site. And, you know, there's no guarantee that an auto detailing space would open up there. This is simply trying, I think, to fix an issue with the split zoning is just really restricts what anybody can do there.
Sure, sure. No, I get, I get why the applicants are proposing something, I'm just mulling over the B2 qualification. All right, thank you.
Sandra?
I was just reading here in the packet about a detailing shop does own a busy day six to eight vehicles. So it doesn't sound like it'll be a ton. And it says detailing shop is different from the car wash, as customers make appointments, there's not a line of cars waiting, and most, the shop is done, is done inside, so that there may not be a lot of cars sitting outside. And to that end, the shop is done inside. Does that mean, going back to your photos of the site, will they be converting this structure to where cars drive in and do the detailing inside? Because from what I understand, the waste hauling is going away, and it's just going to be auto detailing? Okay.
That is the applicant's statement, which is not a binding thing. It doesn't say that they would be limited to six to eight, or would have to do six to eight. It, at this point, doesn't say that all, doesn't require that all work be done inside. That might be how they propose to use, to operate it, but I have to state that there is no guarantee, because there's no, that's not a binding statement.
I'd imagine to run an all-year business, they would need an inside place, and, okay.
But I will also let the Schaefers speak to answer questions.
And did, when you, one more question before she comes. When you sent the notice to the neighbors, did it detail in that notice that it would be moving from a waste hauling to auto detailing?
Uh, no, it just simply stated that.
The zoning.
There would be a rezoning, and directed them to the website for the public hearing, which included the packet, which showed all of the zoning description sheets.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Mary Alice? Oh, Ms. Mary Alice, is your mic on, or closer maybe?
My mic was not on, thank you. Okay. So, I don't know if you heard me, but I'll repeat for those who didn't. It would be good to have a rough estimate, like a maximum estimate. We think that you can have twenty-five parking spots, based on the current footprint and our requirements for parking, or maybe it's twenty to twenty-five, or ten to fifteen, or something, just so we can have an idea of what is possible.
Okay, so for, are you asking for additional research to know for next week's meeting, or just as we are processing any future requests?
I, I would like to know for next meeting, and as I said, it doesn't have to be down to the inch. It can just be a rough range. You know, you have the dimensions of the lot, you have the dimensions of the footprint. Approximately twenty spaces can be created here.
Well, so there isn't, in the, in, there isn't typically a maximum number of parking spaces. There is, for certain zoning districts, a minimum open space ratio, which I don't think applies in the B3 zoning district, but I could tell you if I look in my zoning ordinance right here.
Sure, go for it.
While you were checking on that, I didn't know if we'd, I'm curious in hearing from the applicant, if you had anything to chime in? I think, yeah, if you'd like to come up to the seated one. If you'd just make sure that microphone's on and speak closely into it.
Okay, okay. Well, we've, I guess it's something people understand. Russell's dad owned that property, my husband's dad owned that property. They bought it in the fifties, and then we own the property, and then we have a son that is going to own the property. So we're not going to, it's going to be passed on down to our family. I mean, some people may look at that property and say, you know, but it's been in our family, we've worked from that property. His, my husband's family has lived in that area, so it's not like we're unfamiliar, or we're some ghetto renters or something. We live there, we know the people. We've, what we want to do is our grandson has a detail shop in Rantoul, and he'd like to move it down here. So our son will eventually own this property. You know, we're getting up in our age, so one of these days we'll be gone. So he'll, and right now, we depend on that piece of property for our income. We've worked hard all of our life, we've maintained what we have. We really haven't asked for much help, but we need to be able to make some money off that. Our grandson wants to rent it, it seems like a perfect place for us. You know, we'll still be able to go over there and mess around and help him with stuff, and make sure the lot, because we're the ones that's always cut the grass mostly, and we whacked the property and tried to keep it up to snuff, even though it was a garbage company on it, you know. But we, you know, this was, this was like the answer for us, you know. We didn't know what we were going to do with it. We knew our son was going to end up with it, you know, so what we wanted to do. And as far as I know, there's a small auto shop that's on the corner of Cuddy's Grove and Green Street. And I pass there all the time, because we live on Phila Road. And I count, I count, they have fifteen cars and more sometimes on that lot. It's half the size of our lot or less. So I, I think, you know, that's in a, it's all surrounded by neighbors, all surrounded by neighbors there. So I think, what's the difference? You know, we're here, across the street from MTD. We've got this, the lot, he's going to be doing stuff that he's done up there. You know, we've seen that operation, and so it's, you know, it's sort of like a perfect location for it. That's not a, our neighborhood, that neighborhood is average neighborhood, you know. We just talked to one of the neighbors yesterday, and he said, what was we going to do with it? And we told him, and he said, I can't wait for it to get in here, because I'm going to have James detail our, our car. And I, and he said, and the people that work at MTD, they're going to love it, because they're going to come over there and have him detail cars. So I, it just, it seems like a good thing for it. The garbage company will be gone, people's come, you know, people have complained about that for a while, not for, to us, or not to you guys, but I mean, even when they, they talk about here in this, in the council, it's like, you know, there's a garbage company on that lot. So it just seems like a good, good thing for everybody, you know.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything else, but.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, Chris, do you have a question for the applicant?
Not a question, but I just want to make a comment. I walk, walked by the detail shop on Main Street every day for three years. And yes, cars park there, and they clean them and get them out. And, but I will just say, for the three years that I watched this detailing shop, there was never a problem, and they were in a, they're in a residential area too. So, you know, in the spirit of a good business and providing a needed service, you know, a few cars parked on the lot during the day is, I think, acceptable.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Mary Alice, do you have more questions? I'm not sure if we got a follow-up on previous question.
Do you have a follow-up, Marcus?
Yes, Ms. Schaefer, I think we're finished for now, if you'd like to return, thank you.
So the, the current B1 zoning district has no minimum open space requirement, and the R3 district requires forty percent minimum open space. Shifting that to the B2 would actually increase the minimum open space to point one five. Now, I'll say that the entire lot is paved over right now, so there, I mean.
And pavement is considered open space?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not considered?
It's not considered, you know, if you have pavement that is recreational, like if you have a patio on your house, or tennis courts, or a swimming pool, which is paved under the water, fifty percent of that can be considered open space, but anything that is car-related is not considered open space. There are landscaping requirements that typically apply between a B1 or B2 use and residentially zoned areas. We would have to figure out how to make that work, because a change of use would trigger the zoning ordinance, and they would have to meet the requirements. We would have to figure out if there were places, because it goes from requiring a fence to requiring a landscape buffer between the houses and the business. If there, I haven't looked at it closely enough to see if there's a place to put in, you know, bushes or whatnot. It might be where they would have to get permission by the zoning administrator to install a fence. So in that case, this would actually be, you know, an improvement of the, the interaction between the business and the neighbors.
Okay, all right. Well, I do want to thank the family for doing business in Urbana for so long. I completely understand the need. I'm, I'm just, you know, sitting in this type of position. We have to think about what happens if, for some reason, you decide not to do business there, and then it sells. So what can they do by right with that? And that's what I'm really trying to kind of get at here, to make sure that we don't unintentionally create a zoning issue that maybe the neighborhood would have an issue with. And usually with these types of businesses, with any kind of business, usually it's parking, the number of cars there. But even having ten cars parked there for a day is not that big of a deal, you've got two lots there. But if you have fifty cars parked there, that might cause some problems. But since you have an open area, open ratio area.
Open space ratio.
Thank you. Open space ratio, that does give us a little bit more certainty that it won't be completely covered by cars.
And any new use would, you know, require building permits, even if buildings aren't installed, the change of use would trigger them having to follow the zoning ordinance. They would submit a zoning compliance worksheet, we would figure out the minimum number of parking spaces required. They would have to show a site plan, you know, showing the accesses, and where all of those parking spaces were going to be located.
Okay, all right. Thanks for everybody indulging me in all my parking questions tonight.
But there's, I had a few questions for you here, Marcus, and I think these questions are focused on our kind of city end of ways of looking at it. I understand the change of use and support that. My question's here, so between B2 and B3, so the original application was for B3, which does allow vehicular sales and service, but you're saying that you want to do it B2 as the staff recommendation, and just say that it's a personal service? Is that right?
Yes, because staff felt that there were too many high-intensity uses in, that would be permitted in the B3 zoning district that would not make it the most desirable interaction between the, the R3 zoning district that surrounds it on three sides.
Yes, and that, that makes sense, for sure. I just, I'm just not getting how we can just pretend that this is a personal service. Like, it seems like we're missing a step, like there needs to be some kind of statement, because this is clearly not a personal service when we have a vehicular service and sales. It's not like we're just silent on this throughout zoning, like we know that it fits there. I just don't know how we're justifying that it's a personal service, just because we want it to fit, but I feel like there needs to be a process to like make it fit, not just because we want it to fit.
Well, the zoning administrator is authorized by the zoning ordinance to determine what the most similar use is. And he determined that it fit into that category of personal service. When you compare it to the car wash that is in the zoning ordinance's table of uses, that envisions either a drive-through car wash, where it's pumping out a car every minute, or a car wash where you have seven bays, where somebody drives in, they spray their car off, and they're gone in fifteen minutes, either of which could handle easily a hundred cars a day. That is much more intense than an auto detailing shop, which might be one-third the size, where you might only be handling ten or even fifteen cars a day. So, less intense. That would be, I guess, like if you had a New York City-style laundromat, where you're handling thousands of pieces of clothing a day versus the laundromats that we have in Urbana, the laundry services, where, you know, it fits onto a small commercial block, and there's a staff of three or four, and they're handling, you know, a hundred pieces a day. So it's a matter of scale.
Sure. I guess I'm still not seeing how it fits under personal service, under, instead of vehicular, because there's automobile and truck repair also there. Yeah, I guess I'm just not seeing, so you feel like it's a less intensive, and that's why the zoning administrator has deemed it personal service rather than vehicular sales and service?
If you wanted to call it vehicular sales and service and put it under that category, but it would still be permitted in the B2 zoning district. It doesn't, you know, those categories don't mandate what districts they're allowed in, or whether they're permitted or special or conditional. They're just easy ways for people to find where the uses are. So all the government uses are in one area, all the residential uses are in another area, all of the industrial uses are in an industrial section.
Yes, no, see how that wouldn't matter, though, because that is a difference between B2 and B3, is allowing vehicular sales and services. As a general category for all of those uses, that whole category doesn't exist under B2. And to me, it seems like it's, that's a lot of liberty to say that a vehicular service is closer to personal service when it's clearly the difference between not being in B2 and it is in B3. And I guess just what I'm getting at here is, is there a step that we're missing? Like, having a legal non-compliance and saying that like, this is a vehicular sales and service, and we're going to have it legally not comply, or some kind of special use, or some way to say, to like bridge that step? Is there, is that part of it?
I don't see a step missing, I guess. Does Cindy Attorney have an opinion about if we're missing a step in?
I, I think the suggestion of a missing step is a more formalized way of making the decision of how you relate one particular use to something that's in the zoning code currently, where the use you're looking at is not specifically mentioned in it. And so that helps it all or not, I guess, you know, for what you're trying to find, but.
Okay.
I think that does clarify a little bit, because what I'm getting at is that in B3, it very clearly lays out all the vehicular sales and uses and things. And I know it doesn't specifically say car detailing, but it says car wash, car repair, gas station. Clearly vehicular detailing, I think, fits in there. I mean, it's, it's like it's the Plan Commissioner who has that say, so I guess. plan commissioner who has that say. So, I guess, um, that's my thoughts. But yes, my question is, it's not like B2 is just silent on it. It's that those are clearly not included in B2.
So, in the, the B3, in the zoning description sheet, you're seeing, um, them listed where?
On B3, business, uh, vehicular sales and services are all listed in B3, and that category doesn't exist in B2.
Right. And so, what our belief is that when we last, when this table of uses was put together, um, there wasn't auto detailing as a thing back then?
Correct. But so, the plan commissioner's ruling is that it's more closely in personal services than vehicular sales and services.
They agreed with the zoning administrator's determination that, because this went to plan commission and they said, okay, we, uh, we recommend that you put this forward to city council. Uh, that, to me, you know, says that they were in agreement with the zoning administrator's determination that it was similar to a personal service such as that. Now, that isn't part of their, you know, uh, determination or recommendation, but they did not object to saying that the most similar use was a personal service, examples of being, you know, pet grooming or whatever. Um, but it could also be said that it's similar to a vehicular sales and service of a less intense nature than a drive-through car wash or auto repair. Again, um, there's no machinery involved here. Uh, there is no repair. There are no automotive fluids being used. Um, you could call it vehicular sales and service, and then it would simply be the first entry of a vehicular sales and service category that would then show up in the B2. But again, we're not amending the table of uses. We're not adding auto detailing. We're simply saying that the proposed auto detailing use is most similar to a personal service, and that would likely be permitted by right in the B2 district.
Thank you. Questions, Mary Alice?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I move, um, number, ordinance number 2023-04009, ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map for R3 B1 to B2 at 714 East Avenue, plan case number 2470M23 to city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Move by Mary Alice for, uh, regular agenda, recommendation for approval, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Yes, Chandra?
Um, this is in my ward, so I just, I will be approving this because I appreciate, um, small businesses and you being on that lot for such a long time. Um, and I, I think you, yeah, you're, that position is right. Like you said, MTD is across the street. If I worked there, I'd definitely be dropping my car off and then going to, walking across the street and going to work. But, um, yeah, so I, I'll definitely be supporting this. Um, I think it was weird that it was zoned two different things on that lot in the first place, but, um, so yes, I appreciate you coming out tonight and, and offering this to us. Thank you.
Uh, Mary Alice?
I know we went back and forth on the different zoning, um, things. I definitely like B2 over B3 since we are in a residential area. Uh, B3 is more of a general business area. Um, I'm generally in support of this. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to see that there could be potentially a new business in, in Urbana, which would be great for more detailing places. So, I will be vote, voting for this.
Thank you. Other discussion? It's, um, Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair just a minute?
Sure. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Um, just want to say that I, I agree in supporting whatever changes are necessary to support this new detailing business, and I think that it, it hasn't made sense, that it's been non-conforming and been split, and I support, um, the changes to make it a better situation. Um, as I'm, I'm just still trying to figure out the details here, so I understand doing B2 versus B3 because, like you said, in the future, use is less intense in this residential area. There's incentives to have B2 neighborhood versus B3 more intense business. I definitely understand that piece. My thing I'm still trying to make sense of is I have concerns about just taking too many liberties with how things are categorized. Um, just that I don't, you know, and this has come up with other things, like what if we want to say a plasma center is a personal service instead of a clinic? And I know that's come up, and that's a, a bigger issue that needs to be worked on specifically. But just an example I just have concerns of, we have a category of vehicular sales and services, and I feel like it obviously belongs there. Um, and I understand, again, why we do B2 over B3, but this is why I feel like we're just missing a step besides we just want it to work. Like, I feel like we're missing, how do we make it, okay, legally non-conforming within B2 instead of, to me, it just seems kind of like the less honest, less transparent, less logical route to me of saying that it is a personal service when I feel like we have categories very similar in the vehicular sales and service. So, however we need to do it, but I just have concerns about taking a lot of liberties on that of reclassifying things when they are spelled out in other businesses. It's not like we're just silent on this and everything. Thank you. I would take the chair back.
And I release the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. Any last discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion for, uh, recommendation for approval on regular agenda. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes. And that, uh, motion passes. Thank you for the presentation. And next, we have ordinance number 2023-04-011, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, maintaining the number of Class A liquor licenses for Synesthesia LLC, uh, DBA Gallery, 119 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois, from Executive.
Yes, we have two liquor licenses to consider tonight. The first is to basically maintain the number of Class A liquor licenses for Synesthesia, which will be doing businesses as gallery. This is, um, the business that will go into the space formerly occupied by Nola's on Main Street. It's going to be a, um, offer a multisensory experience, performances in art, music, and light. They will, um, maintain the Class A license that was, um, or applied for a Class A license, which is a bar. Um, because Nola's Rock Bar held a Class A license previous to that, it doesn't increase the number of Class A licenses, but obviously the ownership changed. So, this first application is for, uh, Synesthesia doing business as gallery for a Class A liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Take, uh, if anyone else was interested in a motion as well, I would take one.
I'll make a motion. Um, I'll move approval of ordinance number 2023-04-011, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, maintaining the number of Class A liquor licenses for Synesthesia LLC doing business as gallery at 119 West Main Street in Urbana for approval, um, on the regular agenda. There's nothing else.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Chandra for the regular agenda, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion?
I would, I do need to add one thing, um, for a brief moment in time. The number of Class H licenses, which is the liquor license for hotels, will be reduced from two to one, and this is due to the fact that the branding is changing on the Radisson Hotel up on North Lincoln Avenue, and it will, it's now null and void, and the next liquor license will, uh, be for the new brand. So, brief moment in time, we're down one hotel license, but it'll go back up. But what you're voting on is the Class A.
Check my notes here. Sorry. Okay, we have a motion. We're in second. Uh, that was the end of discussion. Unless there's anything else, could we have a roll call, please?
Before we go there, I'd like to find out now, are we voting on ordinance 011 or ordinance 010?
Uh, 011 was, I think it was on the table.
Okay, well, I think you read the information for 010. Class, that should be a Class H liquor license. You're saying Class A?
We're on number four.
Maintaining the number of Class A, but there's also a change in that same ordinance of reducing H from one to two.
Okay, then I guess that there's been an, uh-
And then the next ordinance is also changing the number of Class H.
Round only damn.
This, this is focused on A.
Okay, never mind. Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes. Thank you. That, uh, that motion passes. And now, we have ordinance number 2023-04-010, an ordinance amending Urbana City Council, or City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class H liquor licenses for VDE3 LLC, 1001 West Killarney Street, Urbana, Illinois, from Executive.
Yes, this is, um, basically due to a rebranding of the hotel. They will maintain a Class, um, H liquor license. This is changing from the Radisson. It's now going to be branded as a Wyndham Hotel.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Chandra?
So, if it's, how is it increasing if it's the-
Because it, it briefly decreased when they lost their, when they ceased as a Radisson, and now it's going to be reopening as a, or continuing as a Wyndham.
But, but essentially, it's a, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. There's no overall increase in either the As or the Hs. It's just all paperwork.
Other questions or a motion? Yes, Jaya, go ahead.
Make a move, uh, motion for, uh, approval of ordinance number 2023-04-010, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class H liquor licenses for VDE3 LLC, 1001 West Killarney Street, Urbana, Illinois, with a recommendation for approval on the regular agenda, because we don't have anything else on the-
Second.
Thank you. We have moved by Jaya for approval on, um, the regular agenda, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes. Thank you. That motion passes. And next, we have council input and communication. Yes, Chandra?
Um, I would just like to plug that tomorrow is the last day to vote in the municipal elections, both here in Urbana and Champaign. We don't have as many people on the ballot in Urbana, but it is an election going on. Um, additionally, I'd like, I hope that people are paying attention to, um, the city's social media and, and things like that. They're putting out some very important information, um, especially when it comes to soliciting public input. Um, I, I don't like to hear people say, you know, I didn't know about that. And so, like, that, that's one easy avenue for folks to be informed and get involved, is to follow the city of Urbana on social media so that, you know, everyone is, is aware of what's happening at the city and give your input when it's time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council input? Okay, seeing none. Our next item is closed session. Sorry, clerk, if you could remind us one more time, we need a motion, a second, and then roll call for closed session. Is that right? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to go into closed session, session for personnel. Uh, what's the IL number? I don't have my updated one.
Do you want me to just make the motion?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, I'll move that we go into, uh, closed session for personnel pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 dash, sorry, slash, backslash, 2C1.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by, uh, Jaya, seconded by Chandra for closed session. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
[inaudible][1502.13]
I move that we go back into open session.
Second. We have a motion to come back into open session from Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? When the clerk's ready, if we could have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Here, or yes?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
And with that, there's no further business before the committee of the whole, and we are adjourned. Thank you.